Before we begin, I'll ask everyone to please turn your phones off, put them on airplane mode, or silence them. And Ms. Sylvia, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Billingsley?
Here.
Commissioner Childress?
Here.
Commissioner Headley?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Everyone is here, so we have a quorum. And if everyone will please stand, I will lead us in the invocation, and I'll ask Commissioner Bone if he will lead us in the pledge. My most kind and gracious heavenly father, thank you for this day, thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us. We thank you for life and liberty and the opportunity we have to live in this country and enjoy all the freedoms that we enjoy. We thank you for those who sacrifice that we can do this. Now, Lord, I ask you to give us wisdom as we deliberate the business of this county tonight, and when we leave here, give us a safe journey to our home. All these things I ask in Christ's name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, I want to thank Commissioner Childress for moderating the meeting last week. In my absence, seems the shingles got a hold of me last week, and it don't like me, and I don't like them. All right, at this time, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Bone, second, Commissioner Childress. Is there, are there any additions or deletions? Don't have anybody under public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to add one under public comments. What did I do with it? Alan Ray under public comments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add, uh, public comments to the agenda, Mr. Alan Ray.
Second.
All right. All in favor of adding him to the agenda, please raise your hand. Uh, and it passes unanimously. All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, raise your hand. And it passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us down to public comments. Alan Ray, if you'll come up to the mic, please, and you have five minutes.
You know, you get me started, you're gonna need more than five minutes. Well, really and truly, what, I'm leaving the County Road Department. Oh, I turned in my notice. Matter of fact, this coming Friday is my last day. Oh, and, but the reason I wanted to come up here is because I wanted to thank each and every commissioner here. Some of y'all knew, some of y'all was here when I was, oh, transferred. I transferred out of the Sheriff Department over to the Road Department. So I was, went from one, one, uh, catastrophe to another one, to be honest with you, I guess is the best way to say that. But, uh, I appreciate the, uh, allowing me to go over there. I've learned a lot. Oh, there's a good group of guys over there, there really is. Oh, there's a good group of, of knowledgeable guys over there. Oh, and with that being said, it's just in my feeling, oh, I'm not the first one to leave, and y'all all know that. Y'all know why. I mean, if you want to know why, I could go into detail. If not, I won't. I, I'm not, I don't mean to throw nobody under the bus. But if something don't change, you're gonna continue to lose people. And that's just, it's simple. And it ain't because of money. A lot of people, I'm, I'm leaving to go to a job that's gonna pay me well. But as I have already spoken with a few of the commissioners, that's not the reason I started looking. Once I started looking, once I, I accepted an application, then I found out how much the job paid. I had no clue until then. I would done made my mind up, it was time to go. All right. I was a pit man. You go down to that pit, you load trucks. A lot of people think that's real simple. Anybody that's running a piece of equipment knows that as far as putting dirt on a truck, that is kinda simple. But when you are running a pit, and when you have to keep a pit to a certain, a certain way, idiom comes down there, and they'll gig you, or whatever it is, they'll write you up for this, that, and the other. Well, I've been in that pit going on three years. Two full years, and this words out of Mr. Emerson's mouth, they ain't heard nothing from idiom about the pit. Before then, they had complaints, they had write-ups, they had stuff. And I'm not patting myself on the back. I asked how things is doing. I was, I was guided, I was coached, I was trained by the knowledgeable folks, and I, and I'll call them out. Kevin, uh, and, and Ben Jones, them's two of the most knowledgeable folks you've got in the county right now. When it comes to equipment, comes to building roads, it comes to taking care of things. And, and, but anyway, both of those helped me along the way, and I feel like I've done a decent job down there, 'cause I've, I've not had no write-ups, everything. If you know anything about a pit, you got a pond, you gotta keep it draining a certain way and stuff like that. I mean, you're gonna have a little stuff, but anyway. And the classification of a pit man, because there's rules that he has to go by. You can't, you, you have to have it where the water drains. You can't have it where the water drains the wrong way. It has to drain one certain way. Oh, you can't have so many acres uncovered at a time. If you have more uncovered than what you get, that's a write-up, possible fine. Oh, I mean, and that's stuff that, that that pit man down there has to do by himself. And I was told that back in the day, there was two people down there. And, I mean, I hadn't kept up with it lately, but it wouldn't, I wouldn't be afraid to say that yesterday and today alone, I probably loaded forty trucks out of that pit by myself, plus kept it looking. You go down and look at it right now, it ain't perfect by no means, but it's, it'll drain. It's right. Oh, so the classification of that man down there, and like I said, I'm leaving, so this ain't gonna help me one bit. The classification of that man down there is, is operator two, and that's wrong. That man's got a lot of responsibility. Oh, and when the man's down there, he has no way to advance up to an operator three to get better pay, to get, he has no way, 'cause there's nobody to relieve him. Oh, there's nobody, that, that, no way he can come out there, 'cause he's that man. But anyway, like I said, I, my biggest thing was, I, I wanted to thank y'all personally, 'cause that's just, oh, I, I, I went down some different stuff, some difficult stuff with the Sheriff Department, and I come over to the, to the Road Department, and, and, in all, in all, the guy's is good, and everybody's been good to me, for the most part. I don't, and, so anyway, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping idiom off of us.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, like I said, I, I was just told that's what it was. I mean, I don't have a way to keep up with it, but...
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, let's see, we have no other public comment, no organizational reports. Uh, we have the consent agenda.
I make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Bone, second, Commissioner Childress, to approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the minutes of July the eighth, claims list, July the twenty-second. Sheriff's Department, a resolution to approve new hire Destiny Shatoya Brown, full-time correction officer, and Jeremy D. Hughes as a full-time correction officer. Commission Office, a resolution to withdraw bid award to Galisby Construction LLC, a resolution to reclassify Elizabeth Libby Ratliff from an hourly employee to a salary employee. Parking wreck, resolution to approve new hire Gary M. Pillgreen as full-time parks and wreck CSR. Road Department, approval of SWA invoice in amount of ten sixty-six ninety-five. Approval to purchase sand spreader for flatbed dump in the amount of twenty-nine nine ninety-five. Approval to remove Devin Horner from payroll. Uh, approval to apply for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six LRSI grant. And that's the end of the consent agenda. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand. All opposed, and it passes unanimously. Uh, old business, uh, early closures and payroll, I think we'll hold that one more meeting, so we have a little more discussion, some, some clarification needs to be made on a couple of points. Uh, I will ask for a motion to set aside the Adeka Brightspeed, uh, motion that is under old business.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins, second, Commissioner Childress, to set it aside. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Need a motion to approve Thompson tractor invoices from July the eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Billingsley, second, Commissioner Perkins, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we have one abstention. Okay, staff report. Trey Keaton, E-911.
Appreciate, uh, Sheriff John Sharon stepping in for me last night, or whoever stepped in for me, I really appreciate that. Had some family, uh, business to take care of, a night, a night with the family, so it helped me, uh, kept me out of hot water. Anyway, I just want to give you an update, uh, on a project we've been working on for a couple of years, I guess a couple of years now, was the presumed tower going to, or going at the jail. This was a company that approached us, uh, probably two years ago originally, and asked if there was any areas in the county that we could possibly put a tower, um, with the intent of us using it for a public safety tower as well. But they were, they had a vendor, which was, turned out to be AT&amp;T, needing a, a place to put a tower within the city of Clanton primarily. Uh, we looked at the jail, it turned out to be a really good spot for us, it worked out well for us, because we are losing a tower in the city of Clanton, uh, when we tell, uh, to take this one down here at the current courthouse. Thanks to Ben, I really appreciate him helping me through this, and, uh, working through that agreement, and, uh, helping with that, uh, Sheriff John Sharon and, and his staff as well. But, uh, we will be, uh, you got an agreement in front of you for that tower. Um, it is City Switch is the name of the company. Uh, they're offering to pay us a two thousand dollar fee upfront, then, uh, once the tower's complete, a one thousand dollar monthly lease for that spot of land, with the, um, intent of us putting, uh, equipment on the tower eventually, once we need it, uh, free of charge.
All right, do, do I hear a motion to accept this contract?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Childress, second, Commissioner Billingsley. Uh, how high?
It'd be one ni-, uh, one ninety, it will match this tower here.
And I don't know, did we get an answer last night on how high?
One ninety.
Hour.
Yeah.
No, what we can put on there, how high will it be?
Uh, they, they've asked, well, how high we need to go, uh, basically, they're gonna use the very top portion of it for the ring, you've seen cell towers, pardon me, y'all. Um, they just have that ring at the very top of it, we'll get, be able to get within, very close to the top of it as well.
Okay.
But, for what we need, we will not need to be extremely high, a hundred and fifty feet or so.
Okay.
Trey, where's this gonna be located?
I know it's at the jail. I'm in relation to the jail. If you're familiar with the impound lot, the old coroner's office, the field out behind the jail, if you keep driving from Sixth Street, if you just keep going straight through the parking lot of the jail, out past the impound lot, it'd be on the wood line at the, in the corner of our properties, in the hayfield, basically.
So it's not going to impact any possible future expansion of the jail?
No, sir, no, it'll be, it'll be completely away from that, um, and out of that line. Go ahead.
Commissioner Billingsley had a question.
Yeah, we're getting real close to budgeting, and what's the projection of this tower when it's gonna go up?
I don't know. Once we sign this agreement, we'll have a lot better prediction of that. Uh, I know they'll have to do, uh, NEPA studies and, uh, the ASR study, uh, of the, in the FAA as well.
Can, any way you can start talking to Motorola people about what it will cost to put a repeater there?
Yes, sir, I can.
So, any way we can get it in next year's budget if they get that tower up? 'Cause I'm telling you, we're still gonna have dead spots with the two towers that's going up now. So that might help, 'cause sixty-five south, even though there's a tower at Enterprise, is dead, in a lot of areas, 'cause there are low-line areas. Then that, I looked at that, and that's really just a straight shot down.
Yes, sir.
Through, as I was saying, go through the hollers, down through there.
Yes, sir.
So...
Yes, sir, and I'll, I'll look into that, we can, we can do some studies, but we can have some studies done to see what, how that would look at, at the tower, and once we get a height of where we're, we're, we're gonna be allowed to be at, and stuff like that, we can definitely have Motorola run those reports for us.
Okay, anybody that's got a question on the, uh, switch tower? All in favor of approval, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Chairman, does ready to sign?
Yes, I do need that, please.
Motion includes chairman to sign.
Oh, I thought it did anyway. It wasn't in...
I apologize, I had that in my notes, not, I didn't say it.
Any approval of a contract?
Yeah, but I thought it'd already written out, how the motion was gonna be. My mistake on that.
Do we need to make that a motion?
Sir.
Do we need to make that a mo-, a motion?
No, as long as, as long as there's no objection from any of the panel, it can be added to it.
Okay.
Okay.
My, my turn still?
Yes, sir.
All right, I just want to give you a quick update on the P-25 project, uh, if you've been out either way of either one of the projects. Both towers are up, uh, they're finishing up electrical work at the water treatment site. Uh, we'll be buttoning that side up here pretty soon, as far as the tower construction itself goes. They've started running COAX and installing equipment at Cedar Grove. Um, we hope to have, have both of them up and operational by the end of August. Um, we'll begin, begin testing at that point, Trey will be able to sleep a little bit better. Uh, and, uh, we're excited about that. I did have one discrepancy in there, uh, we had a meeting with Motorola today at 911, um, with the timeline of the new courthouse, and its anticipated completion date being so soon, Motorola highly recommends us not putting all that new equipment in here, just to turn around and move it out. Um, it will not stop us from cutting over. We can start using the system as, as it is. We will just gain way more functionality, and once we're able to put the consoles in there, it'll be way easier on my dispatchers, honestly. At that point in time, if we may, if we wait to install those, if y'all say, no, we want it installed now, that's what we'll do, it just, it's gonna cost a lot more money for me to have to move it over there, versus us just installing it all new, as is, at the new courthouse.
As long as you got money in your budget.
Oh, yeah, I mean, as long as 911's paying for it, no. Uh, but, no, as, as long as y'all are good with that, I, that really helps, helps take the, a weight off of our, our people. Um, the, uh, we'll begin that cutover process, I mentioned, after every radio that we currently own is reprogrammed, that is built into this project costs. Um, as you're talking to stakeholders, board of education, voluntary fire departments, every law enforcement agency in the county that currently has radios, we will reprogram all those at no cost to them. Um, we're, we're working on that with Motorola now, so we'll handle that.
Is that including the Kenwoods?
Well, we'll have to, 911 is gonna handle the Kenwoods, because that, that's no fault of, of them for buying Kenwoods. I don't want them to be punished for buying Kenwoods. Uh, that, that hit us, that hit the Motorola dealer in the, in the state hard as well, because they can no longer program them, we'll handle that as well. Uh, next line item I have is, uh, request for the Road Department, as they're in the area, various areas of the P-25 sites, to spray herbicide at each one of those, uh, as needed, annually, every highway need to word that, but just, uh, we'll pay for that, the, the additional cost in that, as long as Heath's okay with that.
Did we determine if we needed a resolution, or is that handled by email via policy?
Resolution.
By resolution?
All right, uh, we need a resolution allowing the Road Department to spray around the P-25 tower sites, and to be reimbursed from the general fund.
We have money in the maintenance, in the communication fund.
Okay, all right, so it's in your general fund, reason I said that. Okay, all right, to be reimbursed from communication fund.
From communication fund.
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Childress, uh, second.
Second.
Second Commissioner Billingsley, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
And my last thing, uh, is the annual renewal of the Motorola maintenance contract, um, everything. The new, new equipment is under warranty, but this is for the existing equipment that we have, I'll be requesting that the chairman sign that maintenance agreement for this year.
All right, can I get a motion to approve, uh, the Motorola service ser-, Motorola solution service agreement?
So moved.
Chairman to sign.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Childress, second, Commissioner Bone, any discussion?
Yes. That make, is that the Enterprise Tower and the Maple Tower that we talked about?
Yes, sir, that, that includes everything that we currently own that is not under warranty, everything else is covered under warranty still.
No, I mean, that should be the only two things that we own.
Yes, sir, that's right, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
What's the cost of that?
Forty, I haven't got it in my front of me, y'all, so I'm sorry.
I saw forty-two-hundred something in this package.
It's forty, I believe it's forty-two thousand.
I meant, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, uh, it's, uh, it increases about three percent annually.
I've seen it, I saw it.
Has Ben looked over that? You've looked over all that paperwork, Ben?
No, sure, that was just, it was an annual, same with business renewal.
It's the same one that we passed last year, just renewing.
Is this, is this one off of the, off of, uh, one of the bid lists, or?
Yes, sir, it is a state bid. That, um, this is, like I said, this is basically what covers, we, we've had to use it one time, when we had, we took a lightning strike, it, it damaged over a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment at the Enterprise site, no questions asked, they came out, fixed it, and we're, we're back online. That's what, that's the kind of work it handles, and then any kind of alarms and stuff we get, they call me immediately, let me know what's going on, and they have a technician sent out immediately.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Trey. Okay, Road Department, engineer Heath Sexton.
Hey, good evening, Commissioner. Uh, the first, uh, request I have is for a request for a resolution, uh, for the acceptance of bids for project CP twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Uh, this request, adoption of a resolution requesting the bids received for project CP twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-nine, which includes the resurfacing of County Road six thirty-three ninety-five and seven sixty-four, as well as traffic striping on portions of County Roads forty-two and twenty-three. Bids were received from Dunn Construction Company Incorporated and Wiregrass Construction Company.
All right, can I get a motion to accept the bids?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Billingsley, second by Commissioner Childress, any discussion?
You mean seven fifty-four, all right. Yeah, seven fifty, you said seven sixty-four, I'm just need...
Maybe seven sixty-four.
Seven sixty-four.
I just wrote down a seven fifty-four on the screen. Sixty-four?
Yeah. All right, any discussion? All in favor of accepting the bid, raise your hand. Any opposed? And the bids are accepted.
Next, I'd like to request adoption of a resolution to award the contract for project CP twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five twenty-nine to Wiregrass Construction Company Incorporated, who submitted the lowest, was the lowest submitted, lowest responsible bidder, with a total bid amount of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty cents, and for the chairman administrator to sign the project contract.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Childress, you're the second. Second Commissioner Headley, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
I would also like to request adoption of a resolution to reject all bids received for project RA dash CCP eleven dash six seventy-six dash twenty-five, which includes the widening, resurfacing, and traffic striping of five-point-three-mile segment of County Road sixteen, from County Road fifteen to, to County Road thirty-seven. Uh, it is recommended to reject all bids, as it is not in the best interest of the county to proceed with the project as currently scoped.
All right, do I have a motion to reject all bids?
I make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall.
Second.
Second Commissioner Perkins, any discussion? I'd like to look, make a little clarification. Reason for this is this road needs the full depth reclamation to, uh, to do what we need to do to this road to make this road last. So that's why these are being rejected, and try to get them back in time, so we can get this done in this fiscal year. All right, all in favor of rejecting bids, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Lastly, I'd like to request adoption of a resolution authorizing the advertisement of a revised project for full depth reclamation with cement stabilization along the same five-point-three-mile segment of County Road sixteen, from County Road fifteen to County Road thirty-seven, along with approving a professional services agreement with UES Professional Services eighteen LLC, to provide the, the project's job mix design necessary for the FDR with cement stabilization project, and for the chairman to sign that agreement.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bone.
Second.
Second.
Second Commissioner Childress, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, commissioner reports, Commissioner Billingsley.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Childress?
Yes, sir, I have a update for the animal control, and then I have a proclamation that I would like to read, and ask the, uh, commission to approve. Animal control, um, as we heard last night, Director Balak is collaborating with not just rescues, but she's collaborating with other animal shelters. Part of this rescue operation is gonna include, uh, flight, and where they're flying animals out of the, of the state, really. And, uh, and with, with this new opportunity, and with some opportunities where she's collaborating with others, there's a need for, uh, dog and cat crates for transport, and she is asking, and I think it's on, uh, online, on Facebook, whatever the social media is down there, for people that, uh, desire, that they are in need of, uh, crates, and if you're interested in donating a crate for transport, that would be wonderful, thank you. And then, uh, the, there's an adoption event that starts next week, it will run all week, they're working with a rescue that has, uh, uh, given a grant that, that offsets the cost of adoption. So if you're looking for an animal, a dog or cat, we don't have any fear of that, if you're looking for a dog or cat, there's, uh, should be plenty to choose from, and this is the, uh, an opportunity to, uh, get a free adoption. So there's no adoption, the do-, adoption fee will be waived, uh, it's actually gonna be paid for by the, the grant. Uh, the spay and neuter cost will be covered for your pet, and your pet's first vaccination cost will be covered by the grant, so this is truly a free, uh, adoption opportunity for those that would like to find a new, uh, a new pet, a new friend for the house. All right, and so it is my pleasure to, uh, offer this proclamation to the, uh, to the commission, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas Connie Bainbridge has been an unwavering advocate, tireless champion for the economic growth and prosperity of Chilton County, dedicating years of committed service to the betterment of our community and region. Whereas, through her leadership, collaboration, and dedication, Connie has played a vital role in accepting, in advancing opportunities for businesses, families, and future generations across Chilton County, and whereas Southern Business and Development, a highly respected publication covering over thirteen-hundred communities and counties across twelve southern states, and the District of Columbia, has recognized Connie Bainbridge's outstanding contributions by selecting her as a member of the inaugural class of the Southern Economic Development Hall of Fame. Congratulations, Connie. And whereas, this prestigious honor reflects not only on Connie's professional excellence, tireless efforts, but also her enduring love for our community, her passion for economic advancement, and her vision for stronger and more vibrant Chilton County. And whereas, the Chilton County Commission, on behalf of its residents and leadership, wishes to express its sincere pride in Connie's well-deserved recognition and gratitude for her lifelong service and leadership. Now therefore, uh, the chairman, by virtue of authority vested in him as chairman of the Chilton County Commission, and on behalf of this commission hereby proclaim my sincere congratulations in recognition of Connie Bainbridge, and extend our deepest appreciation for her many years of distinguished service and outstanding contributions to the economic development in our region." And I put this forward as a motion.
All right, I have a motion, Commissioner Childress, second, Commissioner Perkins.
And I do have a little discussion to add. I will tell you that I've, uh, I had a, a great career in a complete, uh, another industry, and then as I became involved with the city of Clanton, uh, the mayor and I had an opportunity to go down to EDAA, it's an economic development opportunity for, uh, people in the state. And, uh, and so we had strategized and, uh, come up with a...
come up with a list of people that we needed to see down there, and, uh, and the topics that we would like to discuss with them and try to lure them into Chilton County. Some were very successful, but by the end of the second day, we had already completed all but one list, and there was this one elusive person, and I won't name that, that person. There was this one elusive person that we just, we were trying to figure out, how are we going to get to this person? And so we are sitting in the, uh, bar and grill down there to kind of strategize, how do we know, how can we get to this person? And lo and behold, this person comes in and sits, uh, about two tables away from us with her people. And so we're strategizing even harder how we're going to get this introduction, and then all of a sudden in walks a lady that walks over, and, and as ladies do, men can't do this, but with very high volume and high, and pitched voice, walks over and they greet each other, hug each other, kiss each other, and, um, and just catch up real quick on who's doing what, and this, that, and the other, and we're going, hmm, we'll get Connie to introduce us. So, and this is a really good player in Alabama that's, uh, they're, their organization invests a lot in Alabama, and, and so Connie is very well-connected. Uh, Connie, uh, was with our chamber, uh, in two different ways, as, uh, executive director for many years, but also is the recent past chairman, correct?
Yes.
Uh, president of the board. But she's also, she moved on to Otoga County and, or Prattville, and, uh, but she never forgot us. So anytime that she could help us move, uh, Chilton County forward, she's always, uh, been willing to do so, as my, uh, activities with the industrial development board for the city of Clanton and the PBA, and anything that I was doing to help the city grow. And now as a, as a commissioner, all I've got to do is pick up the phone and call her, and, and if I miss her, it's within about, hmm, I'd say about ten minutes, I get a call right back. She's very responsive, and, uh, she is absolutely for Chilton County, and I cannot thank you enough for all your support, Connie. Call for the question.
Would you like to come up and say something, Connie?
I hope I don't mess up the vote.
I doubt that's going to happen. You, uh, do you want us to vote first?
No, no. Um, well, first of all, I want to say on behalf of my profession and the South and Alabama, I enthusiastically appreciate this honor, uh, tonight. Truly, I mean that, um, I've been in this business for a long time. Uh, when I got into this business, I was one of just a few females in Alabama that did economic development. Um, and, uh, I was at the Mercedes groundbreaking, many of you remember that, and of course, at Economic Development Alabama, we felt like that was the, the domino that brought us into, uh, some high-paying jobs for our state. Um, so the South has done really well, and I've been thrilled to be a part of that. Um, for me, um, when I got into the business, you didn't wake up and say, well, I'd like to be a economic developer. You didn't say, I'd like to work for a chamber. There were no certificates, no degrees, or very few. Um, that landscape has changed, and you can now get an economic developer's degree and a master's degree in community development and all of that. But for me, I, I found my way into this position here through the Chilton Chamber. I did work here twice. I worked in Harsole in Morgan County, um, then I went to, uh, Prattville and, uh, the co-op, and so I've got a lot of years in the profession, and I love it. There's a proverb that says, if you choose a job you love, you'll never work a day in your life. And even though I didn't choose this profession, I can tell you, um, I don't feel like I've ever worked a day in my life. And I, I want to say one more thing. I know, I don't want to use a lot of your time, but I want you to know how important this is to me. Um, when I was a little girl, I dreamed of flying in airplanes and going on, uh, excursions to foreign countries and great adventures and meeting celebrities and elected officials that I saw on TV. And I grew up humbly. Um, I come from Giles Hill, and, you know Giles Hill, and my dad was a logger, and my mom's family were truck farmers and peaches. And one day I came in, uh, I was in the third grade, and my dad, he had a particular look on his face that day. Both of my parents were very young, and I was the oldest of three children, and he came in and he said, um, Connie, go get everybody. I have something I want to say. And to this day, I get a little emotional still, but he said, I've gotten this big timber contract, and when I finish it, I'm going to build the bathroom and an extra room on the house. And at that moment, I kind of realized that with a good job, the things that I was dreaming, that I thought were impossible, might be possible, because then I could invite a friend home, and I could, maybe we could have family vacation. And I know you might think that's silly, but I fast forward many, many years, and that little girl is still inside of me. And I do believe in a purpose-driven life, and I think somehow this is my purpose to work in this field where that every day I get up, if I have a chance to showcase our community or another community, and I get parents an opportunity at a job, or to make the cash register ring, that little girl in me jumps for joy because she really feels like there are other little girls and boys that want the hope of possible dreams, and I believe that they come through a job. I've, I've often said, I think that my profession's honorable as a doctor or psychiatrist, because I personally don't think you can be happy or healthy unless you have a good income stream somewhere in your life. And I just thank God every day that I get to work in this profession. Um, thank you for this honor tonight, and, and I'm proud of all of the people that are listed in that list. Um, and there'll be others to come out, but we are a small family in Alabama of economic and community developers, and I'm just proud to be in that list. I'm very proud to be from Chilton County. I think anyone would tell you, the other places that I've lived, they would often say, oh, we don't say anything about Chilton County or Clanton, because Connie's from there, and that'll get her riled up. And it might have gotten me riled up, because this is my home, and I love this. Finally, I'll end with just this. I've never had your job. I never plan to throw my hat into that arena, because I believe it would be too hard for me. It would be, um, I, I just can't thank you enough for stepping up and wearing these elected officials' hats. It's a hard job, but without you, economic development and community development would not be possible. And I appreciate you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
Alright, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And I'm sure there are none. It passes unanimously. Alright, uh, anything else, Commissioner Childers?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes, I just have the, uh, resolution. I won't read it in its entirety, however, I'll read a couple. Uh, Chilton County Commission Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of Distinctive County Attire for Certain Statutory Purposes, whereas Section one eleven-three dash eleven, Code of Development nineteen-seventy-five authorize a county commission to direct control and maintain the property of the county, is made deemed expedient according to law, and to set aside appropriate induced county funds or revenues for the purpose of developing advertisers and promoting agricultural, mineral, timber, water, labor, and all other resources of every county of the county, and for the purpose of locating and promoting agricultural, industrial, and manufacturing plants, factories, and other industries in the county. Whereas the Attorney General of Alabama has opened that under certain circumstances is appropriate for elected and appointed officials to, uh, procure distinctive clothing to assist them in their agents, offices, and employees in performing certain duties authorized by the law.
Alright, do you make that in a form of a motion?
Yes, I do.
I do have a second.
Second.
Alright, motion Commissioner Hall, second Commissioner Bone, or any other discussion?
He was analyzing.
Simple return of telling folks what you do.
Oh, I thought the last, okay, so this resolution.
He wasn't here last night.
Okay, uh, this resolution came, uh, for, because we want to purchase, uh, distinctive shirts for the commission. We have meetings, and so just want to let the general public know that there is a resolution that, uh, backs and supports it. That's good.
That answered. Okay, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, raise your hand. Uh, all opposed? Alright, we have six in favor, and Commissioner Headley opposes. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Hall?
That's all, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Headley?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Perkins?
Not at this time, no sir.
Okay, uh, down to me. Yeah, it did throw me for a loop. I'm not used to him not having forty-five minutes worth of diatribe. Uh, as you know, just a few minutes ago, we removed the, uh, set aside the letter that had been drafted to ADECA concerning Brightspeed. Well, over the last several weeks, Commissioner Childers and I have been going back and forth on the letter, and I'm going to give him credit for basically writing this letter, and I'm going to read it, and I'm going to ask for a resolution to adopt it. This letter is from the Chilton County Commission, and it is to Michelle Combs, Executive Chairman and Chief Executive Officer Manuel San Pedro, Chief Operating Officer, Cortland Maddock, President, Consumer and Small Business, Jeff Lowney, President, Enterprise and Wholesale Brightspeed, Charlotte, North Carolina. Each of these are officials with Brightspeed, and it's addressed to Mr. Combs. Upon the acquisition of CenturyLink on October third, twenty-twenty-two, most of your customers in Chilton County hoped that Brightspeed customer service and internet offerings would have been enhanced. After all, it would not have taken much effort as the bar set by CenturyLink was pitifully low. However, this commission continues to, to receive complaints about customer service and about the lack of service offerings. The most egregious examples being Brightspeed's customers who, dependent upon medical services, are left without telephone service or connectivity for days at a time. We understand that this is not the goal or even the intent of Brightspeed, but it is the effect of your operations and customer service. We hope that you agree that this is unacceptable. Therefore, we respectfully ask two things. Number one, that Brightspeed aggressively takes steps to enhance your customer service in Chilton County. Number two, that Brightspeed reconsider its evaluation of the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, otherwise known as ARDOF, grant for Chilton County. It is apparent that Brightspeed has little interest in serving its customers with fiber in the Chilton County ARDOF area awarded to Brightspeed. We respectfully ask that should your reevaluation reveal the same, that Brightspeed return slash relinquish its ARDOF grant award back to the Federal Communication Commission so that another communications company might have an opportunity to serve our citizens with better internet offerings. Lastly, we admire and agree with Brightspeed leadership expressed goals for the corporation. We look forward to our citizens benefiting from the same. Now, those goals of Brightspeed are, according to Michael Combs, responsible for leading the strategic planning and implementation of the company's strategic strategy and goals, ensuring operational excellence and driving growth across the enterprise. For Manuel San Pedro, responsible for ensuring Brightspeed's operations team leverages state-of-the-art technology to deliver on the company's promise to provide best-in-class customer service and a faster, more reliable network across the company's footprint. And Cortland Maddock, responsible for growing sales, marketing the company's innovative product line, creating an exceptional customer experience, and building recognition of the Brightspeed brand. Corden leads a customer experience team of more than five hundred marketing, sales, and customer service professionals. She and her team are focused on building the Brightspeed brand to be synonymous with speed, reliability, and best-in-class service, and on expanding our customer base. And lastly, Jeffrey Lowney, responsible for driving sales and service for business in the rural and suburban areas with Brightspeed's twenty-state footprint. His focus is on customer retention and growth while helping customers transition to fiber technology and grow their businesses with Brightspeed's innovative product offerings. I would ask for a motion to accept this letter and forward it to each name that is on this list.
I make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second Commissioner Bone. Do we have discussion? I think if anybody paid attention to how I read this, I'm a little bit disgusted with Brightspeed, have been for four or five years, and I do appreciate Commissioner Childers' angle on this. I think it's a lot better angle than mine was. And with that, I'll ask for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
You may want to say who's CC'd too.
Okay, and it will be covered, a copy will be sent to the city of Jamison, city of Thorsby, Federal Communication Commission, who is responsible for the ARDOF grant, Alabama Department of Economic Development, which is ADECA, who hands out grants in the state of Alabama for broadband. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Childers.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, next thing I have is, we've discussed last night, training for our department heads so they can have a better, uh, gris- grasp and grip on handling employees, uh, and financials, and anything to do with their department. So I would ask for a motion to allow all our department heads to attend training classes through the ACCA in the four categories of finance, uh...
Personnel.
County government, ethics, and personnel.
I make that motion.
Uh, moved by Commissioner Bone. Second Commissioner Hall?
Everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
Alright, any discussion on this? Then the reason we're doing it now is because one of the classes starts before our new budget year begins. So, uh, we'll pass this, and it will be for all department heads in the courthouse. That means any...
You need to say it's mandatory.
Yeah, and mandatory. This will be mandatory for all department heads.
You need to, um, say something about the classes, that in case it's not in your budget.
Yes.
Okay, do...
You need to say, "There may be another motion."
Okay, we'll just do another motion on that part then.
To amend the budget.
Yeah, we'll have to amend the budget to, uh, pull the money out to pay for this, uh, because the first class is in September. Alright, any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, uh, do we need a specific motion on, or just amend the budget to pay for this?
I make a motion, we have, amend the budget to cover the classes for the department heads.
Alright, motion Commissioner Bone. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Perkins. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Uh, do you have anything, Ben?
Sir.
Do I have a motion, do adjourn?
Make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Bone, second Commissioner Childers. All in favor, raise your hand, and we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.